And I'll open with a prayer and then stand, stand for the class. Lord, good morning. Please be with us as we have convened our meeting and, Lord, as we take up all the businesses before us this morning. We continually seek your wisdom and guidance to enable us to make the best decision, best long-term decisions for the county of Leclae. Lord, it's such a privilege to serve our neighbors here in the county and that's something that we're grateful for and, Lord, never will take for granted. We certainly know what we enjoy here and we give you the honor and praise for the, for all the many blessings that we do, do enjoy. We just ask again that you be with us this morning, be with those who've lost loved ones and those who need healing this morning, Lord, and just put your hand upon them, put, put your hand upon this commission as we carry out our business this morning. In your holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I turn this, I have an important call. Darrell, could I turn this over to you for a minute?
Yeah.
The minutes and then I should be back before first of January.
Okay, no problem.
All right, take a motion for adjournment.
Thank God.
Seeing none, I suppose we'll keep on with the, the work at hand. We have minutes for October the fifteenth, the twenty twenty-four. Have a chance to look over those?
I have.
Have, stay open for motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that and have a motion to approve and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve the October fifteenth commission meeting minutes.
I'm gonna step down and get my quote.
Okay, we'll take a, we'll take a momentary adjournment or momentary.
Are you gonna ask about cart bins on that one?
Today? Probably.
Their example is off.
Their, their example is off, state's example?
In the book, county needs.
Okay, okay. All right, well, I won't ask about compared to state's.
Are you gonna answer?
I won't ask about that then. We'll take a motion to let the presiding come back in and join the meeting. All those in favor?
I heard we.
Well, the last one was should we let the presiding commissioner rejoin the meeting?
Oh.
Okay, minutes is in a aye.
You did minutes?
Yeah.
Aye. Thank you for doing that. Kind of had some, come on. Okay. Next, I would like to ask Jason, Jason Cunningham from MTS Contracting. Jason had come down, I don't know, two, three, four weeks ago, looked at a building and he submitted a proposal to us and I think you had a chance to look at that and we've discussed it, but we tabled that because I think we wanted to learn more about what the scope of the work would look like and, and timeline perhaps and, and so I'd just like to give you the floor, Jason, and let you answer questions we might have and if I understand it right, you've got thirty-plus years in this business or close to thirty, if I remember that.
Yeah, I've got over thirty-three years in this business.
Yeah.
Started in nineteen ninety, just been a grunt as a laborer, worked my way up to the, to the ranks and been an estimate or project manager for twenty, twenty-plus years. Been doing a lot of, a lot of this work over Missouri, Oklahoma, Arkansas. We did a lot of courthouse tools, hospital work. So I met with Randy here, we walked the building, I went around and measured everything, looked it over. Came up with a number of square feet of stone and brick to be cleaned and sealed. Measured all the, let me back up, the bricks, be watching seal, running, need the base bid and I provided you with three alternates, two alternates being resealing the window perimeters. The second alternate being resealing the stone and brick expansion and shelf angle joints. And then we were not sure if the new stone ramp walls and stuff had ever been sealed. So I gave you an alternate price for that. In completing the base bid, we would be working out band lifts out in the yard, going around the building, power wash and then come back around and reseal the brick and stone surfaces. If you elected to add one or both alternates, we would clean the building and then start in removing and resealing those cop joints and then we would seal the building upon completion of those. I will note that if you selected the base bid and, and wanted to go with one of the sealants at the windows and/or the expansion joints, the base bid was, would increase due to the prevailing wage threshold of the seventy-five thousand dollars. Had mentioned that in the proposal. Any questions for me?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll start. So in your, in your base bid, item number three, the stone surfaces shall be given two coats of a natural stone treatment water repellent. So that's all the stone. So, so in the base bid, that's the brick and, and all the stone as well.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And then timeline, I think the day that you came down and did the site survey, you mentioned that this might be a twenty-five project for you. You might not have time to get it done this year. Is that still the case?
We're moving in on whether that's probably not conducive to introducing the water and brick and stone.
Okay.
I believe more towards the spring of twenty-five.
Okay. And then does your company do all the work or do you subcontract any of it out?
No, we do all the work, self-perform all the work. We have about thirty employees out of our office. We're, we're a branch office. Springfield, Missouri. Our corporate office is in Kansas City. They have about seventy employees out of that office.
Okay.
And we have one in Iowa as well. It's self-perform all around.
And have you, do you have any other courthouses in our area that, that you perform this type of work on?
Yeah, I have, I've done, completed work on, we complete work on Green Day, Lawrence, Barry, Douglas, Camden, Christian, Amy.
Doing any work up in Miller County right now?
Nothing on the word.
Okay.
There's other estimators in our office. I'm not always hundred percent sure of the projects that go on.
I think they have something similar maybe, but I didn't ask who, who's performing that work for them. I think that's the questions I have. I'd like to open it up. I think David has, Commissioner Lehman had some questions maybe.
What determines the need to seal?
Uh, there's a test you can, you can run, a round tube test, which simulates a wind-driven rain and how much moisture the masonry is, is taking on. You can complete that. Simple way is just go out there and throw some water on the, on the brick and if it's not beating up, like, like you'd see if you had waxed your vehicle or something.
Right.
That's, that's kind of what you can tell.
Well, in my mind, you know, I've tried to read a little bit about it on the internet, the line editor, whatever you want to call it, but anyway, I mean, at, at what point do you need to start, in just your opinion, you've been in it thirty years. At what point do you need to start sealing or how often do you need to seal?
I would, I recommend sealing from the very end that the building masonry was completed. Just another belt suspenders, protection of the, of the masonry. And depending on what product you use, you're gonna be somewhere around seven to ten years to seal the building. Or reseal the building.
What, I mean, is there any information out there that, that basically tells us the difference of sealed and non-sealed buildings and the longevity?
I'm not sure. I, I haven't seen anything. There could be. I can possibly ask. Prost coat is the chemical product that we use. They've been in the business many, many years. Just see if they have any information.
Yeah, if you got any, it'd be great. I'm gonna try, please.
I can try.
Um, you know, in, in my mind, of course, I come from a common sense that when you seal a building, if any water does get in it, it's gonna take a lot longer to dry out. So it's kind of like in my head, I'm like this on the ceiling and brick.
Yeah. Years ago, the sealants were really not a breathable sealant. So if moisture did get in there, it was trapped and couldn't get out. The chemical they, they make today are breathable. So if you did have a leak, say, from your capstone, water was getting in, it'd still be able to, to leach out and breathe. Kind of like a vapor barrier, you know, won't let, won't let moisture penetrate, but it still can let moisture breathe the other way out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the, I think one of the questions you might have answered that I had, so we had this something processed, I'm gonna say it was ceiling, done about seven years ago. So on this portion of the building, obviously we didn't have the front portion. So you're, you had said that that's a, you generally have seven to ten-year process that, that would, at last. And I don't even know what had been done, if done prior to that. I have no idea. It's, wouldn't, kind of lose knowledge here when guys come every four, eight, twelve years, something like that. So you, you kind of don't, not able to kind of keep that under, easily found, I guess. Might be able to search and find it. But, so seven, ten years for the sealant. What about the caulking? What, what is the timelines that you look at typically redoing the caulking joints and all of that expansion joints?
With, with the urethane that's, that's in the mold currently, or if we go back to urethane, you're looking at ten to fifteen years.
Okay.
They can get stretched for longer than that. It's just coming out, doing a building evaluation, seeing if you can, you know, go another year after that fifteen or so.
Yeah, may, and I'm sure that probably would depend upon the, the quality of the caulking that they used.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
When they were reapplying. Some of that is, doesn't give you the extent. Been amazed when I've gone to look for caulk for home purpose, residential use, the amount of time that that has expanded over the years that they're able to continue to keep it in, in use, lasting that long a time. So I'm sure it's like everything else. You can buy any kind of grade that you want in it.
Sure.
So I guess that, those are two things that I kind of wanted to hone in on. The other one was it, it seems to me, and I don't, you, I like for your professional ideas about this, that the stone that we have around the windows and that kind of, it's kind of turned, it turned darker pretty quick and it's, I don't know if it's mold or what that is, it's actually accumulating on the surface of that, but it just seems like, it's probably like all other places, if you don't get a lot of sunshine direct all the time, then maybe it gets that way. Don't know. I'm just curious why that happens and does your product keep some of that from happening or how, what's the, how do we?
Yeah, if your stone is obviously taking on water, it's kind of wet and then like say on the north side where it's safe, shady more often, you're gonna have some biological growths that's gonna grow on that stone or brick.
Did you see what, when you looked around, did you see what we were experiencing on some of that stone, like especially in the front part of this court building where you look up and it's almost black on some of the gray stone?
Yeah, I don't really recall or remember. Several buildings since.
Sure.
Looked at this, but you have different age periods, I believe, of the buildings it's been added on to, maybe, no, it's all the same age, okay.
Just the new nine-one-one, okay, that's our most recent addition. But the remainder of the courthouse was constructed over about a two-year timeline.
I see. I thought maybe this front area out here was like a regular, older, older structure.
The stone is.
The stone is?
It's not the brick. They salvaged the stone out of the old one to replace it into this one.
That's, that's what makes me think that's an older period of, of that style of stone architecture that's out there appears to be older. Guess that's why it's looking that way to me. So that, that may be over periods of time, wind and rain. Do you know the cut surface and poly surface of a stone away and more, they call it lichens and biological growth can attach to and grow on that stone.
So does that open that up? I, I'm just, my only experience is this, if I'm power washing the sidewalk and I can get down into it too much and I can take, and I can make that surface more gritty, more susceptible to maybe hold that stuff. And I've never resealed my sidewalk after I power wash. I just wash it, get the junk off of it. But is that kind of what that is? Is you think maybe after it's, over time, it's become more porous, maybe, and it's holding that stuff? So does the sealant then, I guess protects it for longer period of time, fills in the pores and whatever that, whatever you call that.
Yes.
Weatherization.
Yeah, it's a penetrating sealant, stops the water from, you know, migrating into the stone. It's shedding water faster than would be taking it in and absorbing it.
So is it power sprayed on the, the sealant or is it more of a, like a small applicator? How do you do, how do you put it on?
It's an applicator.
Brush?
Yeah, no, with a, you know, like a Hudson sprayer. And, yeah. There again, like you say, a power washer is a dangerous tool in the hands of the wrong person. It could damage, you know, measuring stone.
I'm good at doing that. I can cut right through wood sidewalk and do it all the way.
Yeah, so there's definitely, you know, tools of trade that, or methods that you need to abide by when cleaning stone and, and the masonry. You not wanna protect your name, initials, you know.
How long a process is this generally, like a courthouse this size, like the time that you're thinking that? If, if you were power washing, sealing or power washing, recaulking and said the entire project, if you did all of it, what, what like the time would it?
I'd say two and a half, three months.
Yeah, it takes a while. Last guys were here and I thought, man, I, those guys are just loafing or something. It shouldn't take that long, but they were here quite a while.
There's a lot of sealant joints.
There's a lot of joints.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't mean that badly about that group. I just thought, man, they were here for a while.
Right.
But there's, I couldn't think of how it could take that long, but I think you just. Yeah, it takes a lot of time. Should we seal the sidewalks? We probably have sidewalks in need repaired like. A lot more than a lot of stuff, yeah. In our landing in front of the front doors. Uh, do we have any other questions?
Yeah, I think maybe I'm not understanding what I'm reading yet. The alternate, one of the alternates is reseal, reseal all stone and brick sealant joints.
Yeah, so alternate reseal, all window perimeter, new urethane, so that basically all the windows, perimeters, all the door perimeters and the louver perimeters. You have the existing sealant removed and resealed. And the second alternate, reseal stone brick sealant joints. That's all the sealant between all the, all the stone and all the shelf angle and expansion joints and the, and the brick surfaces.
When I come back to one, it says all the stone surfaces shall be given two coats, subcoast natural stone treatment.
Oh, which, I'm sorry, let me leave.
Well, I'm just comparing the two. The base bid, is that included in the base bid?
Yeah. So paragraphs one through six are included in the base bid.
But then we come back over here into reseal all stone and brick sealant joints. Is that not happening in number three?
Number three is all stone surfaces. The resealing of the joints are, okay.
Okay, you're talking about?
Caulking.
Caulking, okay. I'm with, now I'm with you. I was leading, let the ghost tell me again. All right, sorry about that.
Would you recommend an all or none approach with the exception of the, the new stone and brick? So would you recommend, if we're, if the commission would decide to do this, why would we not do, or why would we do all of it? If that makes sense?
That's correct, unless you're looking at bringing the new windows and doors in here in the next three or four years. I would not, not recommend not sealing the windows. I definitely recommend resealing the, the expansion joints and shelf angle joints.
I mean, what, what I see as I walk around, it looks, that's more noticeable just to the naked eye or the untrained eye, that that possibly is in need of repair now.
Yeah.
Whereas it's not as obvious to an untrained eye what the application of that sealant would do for the longevity of the brick or, or stone. But, but I can see where the caulk, if you will, is deteriorating around the, around the building.
Yeah.
And then, uh, so if the commission accepts your proposal and we move forward with this, the source of funding is the ARPA funding. We have some additional ARPA funding that right now is being determined what, what we'll invest in, okay? And, and we would have to have that committed by the end of this year. The work doesn't have to be performed this year and that was the nature of my question for, for twenty-five partially. What would we need to do to secure your bid and your proposal with a financial instrument, if you will, prior to the end of the year without paying you in full for the work that hasn't been performed yet? So I don't know if I've overlooked it, if there's a clause in here that you want to deposit, whether you want to sign contract, what that would look like. We would need a signed contract so the funds are committed. Is that all you would need?
That's all we need is this proposal, signed contract.
I don't think I have any other questions.
I've got one more, Jason. If we pulled the coating for the brick out, what would our base bid be then?
Uh, and I had to go back and refigure that and see what that amount would be. So you just want to power wash and apply sealant to the stone only?
Yeah.
I'd have to refigure.
Well, I mean, do everything else, just not spray the brick with the sealant.
I can look at that and meet you there first.
And go ahead and figure the price on doing it all, because you said the price would be higher because of seventy-five thousand, right?
Yeah, so if we were to, or you elected to seal at, at this time, if you're elected to do the base bid and they do caulking alternates, we'd end up adding twelve thousand, three hundred fifty dollars to the overall contract amount. What I had, what I had done is, is priced this, non-provailing wage, the base bid, non-provailing wage. At the time I knew that we, we wanted the alternates, that was going to be over the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold. So I went ahead and priced these alternates with the prevailing wage rates. So, same, we have to go back and add the prevailing wage rate into the base bid after we get over the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold. That makes sense.
You represent all these people?
Well, let's pull the brick out and see what that looks like.
Okay.
So then, Jason, what timeline do you think it would take you to get that back to us? Because I know we have and hear you, this proposal was good for thirty days. Is that correct? Is that extend that in any way?
I, I don't, I don't see price change here in the next thirty days.
Okay, okay.
You know, just be a revision over another thirty days.
Okay.
And I'll try to get that completed this week and back, back to Randy.
Good.
I guess, I guess I hand-delivered that. Is the hand-delivered bid, was it? I can't remember.
You could send it to clerk@leclaecountymissouri.org. Is that right?
Yeah.
It was clerk.
Everything spelled out, leclae county, Missouri.
That clerk, that? Okay.
Okay, do we have anything else? Any, any further questions? Okay. All right, seeing none. Jason, do you have anything for us?
I know.
Okay. Greatly appreciate being here this morning to answer those questions. It just really helps us understand the scoping project and gives us more information as we look at the, the use of the remaining ARPA funds.
Sure.
Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Thanks, Jason.
Next item I put on the agenda, and this was a continuation from last week, I'm not sure how relevant it is this morning, but we discussed MODOC bridge inspections at our last meeting. So Darrell, I'll put that back on here for the sake of any update or any further discussion. I was, I was mistaken. Our last bridge inspections were in twenty-three for every other year. And so this is twenty-three. It's my understanding we've had a new bridge inspector virtually every cycle. I believe there's forty-plus bridges on here, is what I've been told. And that whole inspection process took less than a day. So it does raise the concern and addresses your point that is it possible that some of the inspections would not have revealed the true need to be considered to be put on the list for, for the bridge replacement? So I just opened that up for any discussion we want to have. I don't know if you pursued anything with, with MODOC, but I'll just open it up. So last week I, I requested Leanna to get all the information that we have on Livingston Bridge. It wasn't wholesome. I've got my L's. I was in the L's, but I was on the wrong word, Livingston and.
It wasn't wholesome, I've got my L's, I was in the L's, but I was on the wrong word, uh, Livingston, and, um, all the, all the interactions with, that we had with MODOC regarding the inspection that was done by, um, Jeremy's company that, um, that they did at the Smith and Company. And so, um, all, we've got all the, all that pulled up. Uh, she's resubmitted all that back to Jeremy so that he can easily access that. And, uh, there is a, uh, I think at that time there was, there was some dialogue with, uh, uh, the lady at MODOC, her name's escaping me right now, Je- uh, Joanie? Joanie, yeah, I was thinking Jenny, that didn't sound right. Uh, about what we needed to do, and she had claimed that, that referred to the fact that these bridges were going to be inspected in twenty-twenty-three at the time. And, and then we find out that it took less than a day to do all forty bridges in Leclae County, so it probably was not. If they even went to that location, uh, they probably didn't give it as sufficient in depth, and, uh, I hate to speak for MODOC, but it, it appears to be that they didn't do a due diligence on that, so. And that may help us in the situation that, listen, it doesn't, we want to see what their inspector had from that, and then let's proceed and see if this could possibly qualify. As like, Jeremy said that you wouldn't normally have somebody to come out, an engineer give an inspection report on it, and then inspector would totally disagree with them, uh, more than likely would agree that it needed some. And, uh, so, I think maybe just a little bit of glimpse, it might help the situation further, but, uh, that's where we're at currently, haven't been able to get Jeremy back together and then, and proceed with contacting Jeremy again and see where we can pull at it this week. Intend to do that this week.
I would almost think that, um, the clock's working against us for anything for this year. Uh, but I think the work, the groundwork that you'll do will benefit us next year. Uh, so I appreciate, um, everything we can do now to get that on that list. So when we have the opportunity perhaps, uh, next year, uh, to have this looked at, so. I just encourage you to keep, keep pushing hard on, on, uh, on MODOC. Yeah, to see if we can't, can't move that up on, get that put on the list.
And for this year, I still say you put it on the list.
What's it gonna do? Place it there.
We don't have anything.
We don't, we don't have that option unless it is approved by MODOC. We can, we can request, we can beg, we can encourage. But what are you referring to as the list? Maybe I got a head of.
Three that we, they're asking us to submit.
Yeah, they, not that I disagree, but they would be the ones that would determine whether or not that goes on our list. And I think we need to do everything within our ability and our power, uh, to get that on the list. But I don't think we can just arbitrarily say we want that on our list and have any expectation that it would ever be approved.
We may not, but if we don't keep highlighting it, they're gonna keep ignoring us.
Yeah.
And we can't afford to have all this pencil with it.
Yeah. And I think that's, that's my point, Darrell's initiative to, to get it done.
Darrell's, you know what he needs to do to, but I think we go ahead and put it on the list, put it in front of him, there he wants to see it.
Okay.
The bridges we send it.
You can tell him it was the two guys that were leaving decided to do that.
Well, I'll be sure to get that done. Approved.
Well, if you put it on the do note, they'll at least know that, you know, we're not gonna give it anyway, so.
Leclae County guys, aren't they funny? Okay. Any, any other discussion on the bridge inspection? And, um, there's all the bridges, I, I think we've probably all looked at those, glanced at them and, okay.
I, I, not, not on the bridge, but I had to ask another question to Jeremy about potential for, um, a, uh, the box culvert on Kentucky, and about that particular way. I visited our road foreman, and he, he really discouraged the fact that that would be the process that we would go. One, the timeliness of doing that, we know how long it's taken to do a bridge. Uh, out from being on the list to now being, when it's finally going out for bid, and it's finally going out and being taken care of. We've been, how long we been on Bobcat? We looked at that and wrote it out there two years ago, I think, or maybe three. Uh, kind of think that maybe we'll be way past that time of being able to go out and actually should be able to go in and, and fix that box culvert, so. Uh, it, I can see it one way, why? You'd want to maybe proceed with some state funding on that. Kind of ties you with inspections from now on, but it also, uh, just the length of time, I don't think that flip a coin, will the box culvert in Kentucky last that long? Waiting for it to get, then going out for repair? I, I, I think it'd be better off to put it in your normal budgets, if it's possible, maybe out of ARPA. And, um, proceed with getting repaired long before that and shutting the road down, waiting for it to get done. If that's, that could even happen, if it, if it fails completely.
Well, back on the, um, financial aspect of that, we're likely to exhaust most of our soft match money with these two projects, these two bridges. So if that were to be put on the list for a bridge, we know that we'd have to match twenty percent, may, maybe less, depending on whether they maintain this current system or whether they go back to the old system. So it's conceivable that that twenty percent match we'd have to come up with would cover the cost of the box culvert and then, um, you know, shorten that length of time that the road is, is out of service, so. I think that's another way that we could, we could look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could almost justify it that way.
Yeah.
Be a little more than twenty percent, but that part is, it'd take forever.
Okay, anything else on bridge inspections?
No, thanks for putting that in there.
Yeah, keep it updated, I guess, wanna keep, keep the momentum going, so.
Yeah.
Next time, I, I just had, uh, part funding projections for, for twenty-five, and I ran across this in an email the other day, I don't know where, I didn't see it in there, but, uh, Mac had sent out, uh, an email that had the twenty-five projections in it. So I took the liberty of looking at our, our projected, uh, receipts this year, and Linda gave us a, an update this morning. Our projected receipts are, uh, to be, uh, one million three hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. And Linda, help me out with your numbers here. Uh, I'd have to add all three of those together, right?
To get them.
To, to get the total so far, yeah. But what they're projecting, a slight increase for next year, uh, excuse me, excuse me, twenty-five is projected to be one million three hundred and fifty-one thousand, two forty. This year, the projected amount, and I, and I'm not sure where we're at in budget, Linda's got it in front of us, the projected amount for twenty-four is one million two seventy-five, seven fifty. So the projected increase for twenty-five would be seventy-five thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. That's just based on projections. Not sure where we're at right now, I haven't looked at Linda's report that she gave us this morning. But, um, I'm just tossing those numbers out there for future, future planning, when, when we, when we get in budget again, so.
Will there be a little bit of increase out there for that?
Uh, there should be.
Two more?
Two percent increases.
Yeah, and that's based on consumption as well, right?
Well, and give back too.
Yeah, yeah.
Give back, give back.
Yeah. So anyway, that's just a kind of a FYI. And Linda, appreciate your numbers, I just haven't looked at them very close yet. Never mind, that was, okay.
When you were looking at the book, I do have, it does say about the fifty-third MAC conference, and we have one of the guys here that would be interested.
I believe Joe has signed up and registered, and I don't think Eric intended to go. Not speaking more, but that's why I'm not here. It gives a little bit of a agenda, abbreviated agenda that. Okay, the next item, I didn't have any CDT applications. Do we have any outstanding? Linda, I know the chamber, I seen the chamber director yesterday and encouraged the chamber to get theirs in, but is there any others outstanding that we haven't received that maybe we need to nudge along? Okay. They indicated the chamber did, they have theirs in this week, maybe look at that. Okay, next on my head on the agenda was we, I, I didn't get to meet this gentleman, but, um, there was, um, information laying on my desk from, uh, Raleigh Networks, and I kind of found this interesting, just wanted to put it on the agenda for, um, just to make, uh, commission aware of it, make the public aware of it. Uh, Raleigh Networks operates in, uh, if I understand it right, in about six states, or actually based in Oregon. Uh, but they left a map of an area in northern Leclae County, uh, north of Eldridge, west of Eldridge, and east of Eldridge. And these are areas that are going to be serviced with a fiber network. They already have the fiber in the ground, if I understand it correctly, and this isn't the same company that was doing the rest of it. I, I don't, I don't believe. And it's being funded by the Universal Service Fund, which is the feed on our telecommunications devices. Because I was curious, how can you, um, lay that fiber and this ever pay off in ten lifetimes? But it's being funded through the Universal Service Fund. I just found that interesting, and, uh, those who live in those areas, I'm sure will benefit from having, uh, fiber.
Was there a type premium?
Uh, the fiber's in the ground, so.
They've been working on playing fiber in it for, by what? And it's like everything. Fiber's here, but if you try to get three houses down here, we don't serve you, sorry. So, so. Your neighbor gets it, but you don't get it, so it's just kind of how it is.
Not to correct you on that, but if my ears heard what I think I heard, every house in that map was, had fiber.
Oh, if it's in, within those maps.
If it's within that area.
But like if you're outside of that border.
Correct.
And, and some of these, they were going off of the Statland Telephone Exchange, I think, potentially? And so then we had people that were Statland Telephone Exchange headphones, and they didn't get it, they were just less than, uh, maybe fifteen hundred feet.
Just like Boeing.
Just like Boeing, yeah. Yeah, which honestly, I guess you start and stop someplace, and I get, I get, understand that, but it is a, uh, I've heard it from the folks that didn't get the, didn't get the service, so. Pretty interesting.
Yeah, people up south barely don't need it.
You don't have Statland Telephone Exchange.
They love the wrong side of the track.
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah.
One of you asked me the timeline, uh, I did make notes when I talked to the gentleman, he said it's two months.
Two months and have fiber there? Or have.
Before the, before the systems, before the switch is turned on, so to speak. All right, uh, and that was just kind of FYI, I just found it interesting that, uh, to those typically look like very underserved areas with no whole bar expectation, but, uh, looks like they're gonna have high, high-speed network. Next item I put on the agenda was preview open house, we're, we're putting the finishing touches on, uh, Thursday's open house for the nine-one-one. Uh, I'll be meeting with, uh, others today that have been planning that to put together the final, uh, details. Um, that's at two o'clock, we have sent out, uh, digital invitations to a number of individuals and groups. Uh, I'd like to thank the Leclae County Record for, uh, their article in Saturday's newspaper and, and perhaps even, um, see an article in tomorrow's paper, but I think we're gonna have a, a good event there. And, uh, looking forward to, uh, being able to o- open that up and, and, um, allow the public to, to, to see it, and then we start to, uh, work out there. Right this morning, we're down there working on some, some details, uh, there's, um, one of the reasons I had to leave was something needs done down there, so we have a few little odds and ends to, to get taken care of. But, but it's all going, uh, going well. Any, any questions on that?
Do you need anything like a pop-up tin or anything for, or just planning on just, we'll be that long with a ceremony out front in the first place? I've got something if you need it.
Yeah.
Just a small one, ten by ten.
Ten by ten. Uh, let's, uh, let's keep an eye on the, on the weather. Uh, it doesn't look like we're going to encounter any, any showers, but you might throw it in the truck just in, just in case. Uh, I anticipate the ceremony to last no more than thirty minutes, probably twenty, okay? Um, and those details will be, uh, you know, finished today, but that's how long I anticipate it to be. It's probably about, about twenty minutes, maybe. Depends on how long you and David talk. Could be one of the last shots we have, maybe a while. Uh, chairs, uh, we'll bring the chairs over from Ollium Conference Room, those are staged over there right now to, to bring over, um. So we'll, we'll have those, the, um, I think, I think it's all coming, coming together. Uh, one of the vendors is down there working right now to get the access control and, and all the data connections that, that, uh, that are outside of nine-one-one functioning, because nine-one-one's working out of there right now, which, which we know that, they've been working in there for a couple of weeks. But there's still some access control and some, some, uh, low voltage, uh, work that needed to be completed. And, uh, they finally received their, uh, equipment that they needed, and they're down there installing that yesterday and today, and, and, uh, will stay there until they get it done, I understand. Okay. Then we're in general county business. Open it up.
So, the floor maintenance guys will be here today, this evening, this afternoon, late this afternoon. Actually, no, they'll be here this evening, uh, the last word I had was, uh, they've arrived at about seven-thirty. And, um, they had a couple of questions about how they get in. I told them I'll get as many answers as I can, if it need be, I've got access to here, and I think I can get through and allow them to come in through the dock area. And then, I guess I need to figure out which straw you guys want to take to come let them out at about four. Uh, yeah, well, that's kind of what he asked, he said, is it possible, can they just let themselves out? I, you know, there may be sheriff deputy or something, I, I really don't know what the process has been. Linda, you've probably been around it before, but.
You can always get out, just be sure the doors are shut.
Okay, yeah. That is kind of what I told him, but I wasn't just one hundred percent sure on that. And that'll be this evening, and then we'll probably know more about when they will need to get in on Wednesday.
Mike will have sent out that information.
Okay. And, um, is there, do we need someone from like the sheriff's department to come up here and allow them to come, to go out or to come in? Is it?
Up to you, but are they bonded and they've got?
They've got all, they've hit all the requested things that we typically do for someone to provide service, licensed bonded and.
Everything's locked up besides that, so we wouldn't see.
I didn't, honestly, I didn't know if that was something that our maintenance guy does, I, I really didn't know. I don't care if they let them in, I'll, I'll be around, so I could do that portion easily enough.
They're on camera?
Yeah. As far as a uh uh emptying buckets and clean, cleaning them, is there a? Do we have a sort of a utility area that they actually use for water and on this floor?
The um.
That's the other question he had.
Closet between the two restrooms. There's a janitorial closet there. Uh and then if they need to go outside, there's a water spigot here on the backside. Uh kind of um behind uh the recorder's office. But there is a key that turns that water on. If, if they needed that. But we, uh your key will get you into that, uh which you know will get you in that janitorial closet.
Okay, that's the other thing, I want to know if we could get in or is maintenance need to leave that unlocked?
And depending on what time they come, the cleaning crew will be here probably during that timeframe as well. So the cleaning crew very well would be working out there, but um but your, your key will work that.
Okay.
That'd be somebody else might needs to call.
Yeah.
Maybe somebody else might needs to call and let them, give them notice, heads up.
That, that cleaning crew will be in, will be in the offices.
Timing, but.
Yeah.
They've got different times, different days, different areas.
Yeah. That was the only other questions he had and I thought I'd, I would respond back to him so that he could. Push that on to the crew that'll be here. I think that's it, I had on that one.
David, do you have anything for us?
Do we believe they do the do?
I have two things. One would be uh Linda has uh um requested uh information regarding. Our computers campus-wide. We know that some of those will need to be replaced due to Windows no longer being supported after October of next year. Uh we know that some will need to be up, can be upgraded. Uh but this could possibly be a use of our funding. And I keep stressing to myself the urgency to determine. How we're going to invest the remaining ARPA funds. And so I wanna, I wanna put this on the list for consideration. Uh with probably about thirty, thirty thousand dollars. There is a patch, there's some uh machines that the sheriff uses in the vehicles. But if I, I scanned an email quickly, but there is a patch that would enable them to uh not need to upgrade. Uh after that timeline and I think that needs to be coordinated with the sheriff's office. To really uh understand how those machines interact with our network. But the way, the way I understand it, this monthly fee, there would be a monthly fee would uh build that wall, if you will. That would allow them to continue to function. And not uh be any more of a risk to our system. Uh now that's just the thumbnail sketch of that, there needs to be some more questions asked and somebody explain it to me face to face. But if those computers needed to be replaced and it was a consideration, then you can probably double that, that number that I just gave you, okay?
That there, yeah, that could be added.
Yeah, yeah. So that's just for consideration because uh our next meeting will be. The last meeting of October, we won't meet the week uh, we can, but it's unlikely we'll meet election week. And uh anything that needs put out for bid has to be uh at least the two weeks, we know. So, you know, I'm just saying that. Any, any, any consideration here that, that we have for the, the use of these funds, uh we. We need to be making those decisions. Now I'm gonna throw something else out for that, that I haven't uh really um tossed out before, but. You know, one time we looked at a, a building out back here and the scope of that originally uh sounded very good. It would give us some uh space for storage, uh space to uh secure a uh, a vehicle. Uh if the sheriff had for evidence, if need be. Uh we didn't act on that, then we kind of thought, well, maybe we just kind of put up a shell and we have storage there. I think you investigated some uh, some possibilities of what that would look like, I think David's looked at that. I'm not sure we're leaning in that direction, but I'm gonna toss this out and. I, I'm not saying I'm sold or convinced, I'm not trying to sell it, but I'm gonna put it out there as an idea. This building down here on the corner, the old MU extension building, not where they're at, but down here on the corner. Uh it, it, it's just full of stuff, okay? Now, what, what I envision as I, as I kind of walk around here is uh renovating that building. Adding on to it on this end, you've got an elevation difference there from the parking lot towards built. So it looks to me like it could be a real easy loading dock. If, if, if you came this way uh in the grass, maybe a little further in the parking lot, maybe another uh, let's say twenty-four to thirty feet. And if we could make that a two-story uh building, I have no idea what this would cost. Um I think that has some merit for uh consideration. You can't walk through that building right now, uh hardly, it's used for uh maintenance, we have uh two mowers in there. We have snow blower in there, we have various hand tools, we have um items that uh belong to elections stored in there. We're going to declutter irregardless, um but I, I just wonder what that, that might look like. And that might fit within the, uh some of the remaining funds that we have. And I think it would provide us some additional storage space. Uh it could give, uh maintenance could put, uh use part of that. It, it could be a loading dock that sometimes we run into where we, where we need a delivery. And I know we have a loading dock out back, but, but sometimes all that stuff doesn't come in. Just tossing it out there as an idea. Uh I'm not an architect, I'm not a contractor, so I can only guesstimate what something like that would cost. But I think that's a possible use of some of the remaining funds that would uh, that would solve uh maybe one or two of the problems that we have. So just toss that out there.
Linda, you have any uh routine business? Well, let me, let me go to this, public comments items listed on the agenda.
Uh could I get a copy of the map of the Raleigh Network?
Here's the information, Jack.
Is that a copy?
Is that a copy? No, uh that's, that's.
Can I take a picture after the meeting?
Yeah, sure.
Awesome.
Okay. Okay. Public comments items listed on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, Linda, routine business, we have some payroll.
Maintenance issues, we have a uh that never ends. Uh we have a rooftop unit that has two compressors out, none that we've worked on recently. Um so we're securing a bid for those replacements. We do have a issue to be resolved down in the new nine-one-one with uh water pressure um. That they're uh researching uh and maybe will be here today, but we continue to have some water pressure issues. In the uh restrooms in the new nine-one-one.
Had another one leave today, but we definitely.
Okay. Public comments items not listed on the agenda. Gentleman, anything else? Is there anything you'd like to see on next week's agenda that, that uh needs discussed?
Do we need to work on Thursday for?
I can't, we can't do it this, well, we could do it Thursday morning, but I think this Thursday would not be a good day because of the open house. But uh next Thursday could be good, or uh a week from Thursday, I don't have a calendar in front of me, so I was looking at it. It's up, that pops up when you open it up, unlike, I, I won't look at my calendar, I guess.
Okay.
Oh, it's your calendar, it wouldn't have mine, yeah.
So that would be the Halloween, that would be, that's Thursday.
Your silence is deafening.
Yes, it is. Stop it. Now I can get it in my calendar. We could do the thirty-first if you'd like to, to do that. Uh and, and I, and I'm all in.
Well, if we don't get on it, we're not gonna get anywhere.
I'm, I'm with you.
I'm not sure, possibly building's best way to go.
And did you, I forwarded emails regarding the uh items, um the final uh credits. And the add-ons to the nine-one-one, I shot you both forward that email this morning before you read it out. So we could, that, that's gonna come, come up, they uh, I think there was four parts to that. Uh there was a credit on the uh, the uh, the soil, wasn't as large as I anticipated, but there was a credit there. There was um the uh fee for the fifth handrail that wasn't in the specs. Um there was the low voltage and there was one other item. Keep in mind, most of that will be offset by the credit that Paragon will reimburse us for, for the uh, for the brick. Out, out front, and there was one other thing that they need, the doors. Doors. So most of what you see there, if you do the map, most of that will be close to an offset.
Almost wash, yeah.
Almost a wash, pretty, pretty close, probably within four, five thousand dollars. Linda, you have anything for us? Do you want to go do a lectures, because it's gonna be busy? Anything else? Are we agreeable to the work study on the thirty-first?
Soon the better.
Okay. Okay. Or we could um, we could do Tuesday and, and then uh, and then we could recess or adjourn from our scheduled meeting and we do afternoon. Uh as a work study. And I'm just tossing that out there, if you want to do it one, in one day as opposed to breaking up two days. That's only a suggestion.
I'd be good that way as well, probably. I think David's the only one that's got another job.
You know, work just gets in the way of things, doesn't it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
Sort of might be better if you prefer to break it up or have it all in one day.
I'd say the sooner the better is all I.
Okay.
I, I think we need to get started better, actually. We have a research to do, it's gonna cut us short.
So twenty-ninth, maybe do it.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll have a regular scheduled meeting and we'll do work studies, say after, after lunch, would that, that be?
On Tuesday.
Agreeable on Tuesday? Okay. Right now, I'm not aware of anything else going on that day.
As long as you're bringing lunch with the group.
Right, right, yeah.
Cheerios or apples or whatever.
I do have apple. All right, any, anything else? Okay, seeing that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. You know, they're supposed to send them to everybody, I will send it to you as well. This one came from, uh we stand adjourned, this one came.